Sprint, Sarah, sprint.
I'll go ahead and call this meeting the September 24th, 2018 meeting to order. First item of business is a closed meeting specifically. Be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Section 2.2, 3.711, "Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body." One, the Board of Equalization. Two, the Transportation Safety Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion by Supervisor Biggs, second by Supervisor Shepard. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchkowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spud?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Biggs and a second by Supervisor King. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fitchkowsky?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spud?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2, 3.711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And what this certification is, is our Board's word to you that we're only discussing things that we're supposed to be discussing back in the closed meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I believe a motion by Supervisor Shepard and a second by Supervisor Biggs. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spud?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchkowsky?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
The next item is Delegate Chris Hurst with -- excuse me, I just skipped ahead. Next item on our agenda is implication, and we're going to observe a moment of silence, and then I'll ask Carol Edmonds to lead us in the pledge.
Let us pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we're up to the next presentations, and Delegate Chris Hurst, Delegate Hurst, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you Chairman Tuck, members of the Board. It's going to be with you again on a Tuesday night. One of the great honors and privileges of being a member of the House of Delegates is the ability to introduce a resolution that proclaims some announcement that we can agree to as an entire body, or actually agree to as an entire General Assembly, both in the House and Senate. And generally, we do these to celebrate the life of someone who has meant so much in service, or in their actions to a community, or we do it to commend someone who has also done the same and is still with us. We have two former members of this Board that we introduced resolutions to honor their work to this county for many, many decades, and wanted to have an opportunity to honor them and celebrate their work and their achievements, and also, of course, give opportunities for members of the Board to share their thoughts about two wonderful women who have meant so much to Montgomery County. The first resolution that I introduced in February earlier this year is House Joint Resolution 292, celebrating the life of Lindsay West. Lindsay, as you know, Ms. West was a member of this Board, and then after leaving the Board became very active still civically here in the county. I did not have the opportunity, the honor, the privilege of being able to know her very well, but did visit her in the hospital after her stroke. And I remember that she couldn't talk very well, but what she said that she wanted, and when I asked if there was anything that she needed, she said definitively, "Can you get me a newspaper?" So I said, "There's no newspaper?" And I went onto the hall, and there was no newspaper, and I went downstairs to the lobby, and there was no newspaper, and I went outside, and I'm thinking, "Is there a newspaper stand I can go and did I have any change?", and found a newspaper for her and brought it to her because she wanted to remain informed. She wanted to know what was going on. And when I went to visit her again a few days later, I decided to bring a whole week's worth of newspapers for her so that she could continue to be informed. And I think that really is speaking to her actions, her will, herself, and her legacy as a member of Montgomery County, as someone who always wanted to know what was going on and always wanted to have an active stake and an active role here in Montgomery County. And so I would like to read just the last portion of this resolution, and then if we could, I would like for members of the Board to share comments about Ms. West, and then if we could have pictures taken with her son and her daughter who are here with us tonight. Resolved by the House of Delegates, the Senate concurring that the General Assembly hereby note with great sadness the loss of Lindsay West, a dedicated Blacksburg resident who gave outstanding service to the community, and be resolved further that the Clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the family of Lindsay West as an expression of the General Assembly's respect for her memory. And we have that copy with us here tonight. So with that, I'll give it over to you Chairman Tuck.
I'll open it up to the floor. Would anyone like to share some thoughts about Lindsay? Go ahead Supervisor Biggs.
Well, I actually observed Lindsay when she was on the Board of Supervisors, and like I've stated at her memorial service, she was my role model for being on the Board of Supervisors. She was very, she was an activist and a catalyst, and what mattered to Lindsay was the public service aspect. And so she left behind for us, and that's what I said that day at the memorial service, a legacy of love for this community. And by everything that she did in this community, whether it was on the Board or whether it was in all her various activities, she left the community better than when she arrived here. And not only for now, but for generations to come. And so she's someone that I've truly admired over time, and I'm just so glad Delegate Hurst that you were able to honor her in this way. It was so well deserved.
Other members?
Well, and I agree with Mary, there were two things that stood out about your mom to me, her love for this community and her love for her family. And those were just two so crystal clear things that guided everything that she said and did. She was wonderfully supportive of me, and I view her as somebody that paved the way for future women to be in public service and in positions of leadership.
And don't forget, you were the first woman from District G after Lindsay to have that seat.
Big shoes to fill.
Other members?
I have my own story of Lindsay. I grew up on Giles Road, and Susan and Roger were just down the way, and there would be times I would have meals in their house, peanut butter and jelly, or peanut butter and honey sandwiches as well. And she was just a delightful person. It didn't matter what your skin color was, it didn't matter how much money you made, her door was open to you, and a diversity of ideas were welcome in her home. And she was a very special lady and gave a tremendous amount to our community, so.
If I may, I would like to move on to the next resolution, and then we can do pictures with both after talking about Ms. Perkins. We can do that too. So moving on to a commending resolution, this is House Joint Resolution 154, commending Annette S. Perkins, agreed to by the House of Delegates January 26th, 2018, agreed to by the Senate February 1st, 2018. I don't really think enough could possibly be said about Annette Perkins and what she's been able to do in Montgomery County, not only in the fact that she has educated countless children here in Montgomery County as a schoolteacher and has been a fierce advocate for our schools and our teachers and our education system here in this county, but then all that she has been able to do through her position as a member of the Board of Supervisors and serving alongside some of you and being able to really see a tremendous growth of this area while she was serving here on the Board. The resolution includes many of her accolades. One of the very important things that I would like to point out that is included in this resolution is that she was instrumental in having a 9.25 acre portion of undeveloped property located adjacent to Nellie's Cave Park donated to the town for public park known as the Meadow. And we know how important that project was to her and how much joint benefit the citizens of this county will be able to receive by it. So again, I am humbled by the ability of my role as a delegate, but to be able to have actions by the General Assembly, commend and honor those citizens here in Montgomery County who do extraordinary exemplary work for us, and certainly, Annette Perkins is deserving to be commended by the General Assembly, and I was honored to do so. With that, Mr. Chair.
Again, I'll open it up for comment.
I'd like to speak. I don't think I got to tell Annette this when she left or was cut off the Board, but I really appreciate getting to work with you and watching you and your experience. It's invaluable, and I appreciate the time I've got to spend on the Board with you.
Other members?
I'd like to say one thing. Ms. Perkins, me and you have been friends for a long time. She didn't always like some of the ways I voted, but we remained friends, and that was a key factor. When I first got on this Board, I told each of them, "We may not see eye to eye, but we will remain friends forever." Then I'll tell you one little thing on Ms. Annette there. I usually carry a little candy and set it up here every once in a while, she sneak over and get some of it.
Other members? Supervisor Biggs?
I don't know what I would even say, because I served with her for 20 years, and it went by in a heartbeat. And I think, you know, if you look at the resolution, you know that she was busy seven days a week doing her Board of Supervisors job. And I think a lot of people don't understand when you get elected to local government, whether it be the school board, the town council, or the Board of Supervisors, it's just not a job that you go to a couple meetings a month. That's how we trap people into running. It's a lot more than that. And even when you're on your own time, you're on Board time, whether it's Progers or wherever it is, and Annette was always available. And, you know, I miss her. I miss her. Not to say that I'm not happy sitting next to Sarah, but I miss her as a Board member because we were together for 20 years.
Well, and I, the same, Annette. I miss working with you, I miss seeing you all the time, I miss having you as a member of our Board. Your leadership and the decades that you spent in leadership are just incredible. I think when we did the Perkins Park dedication, Chris, there was a number of hours, I think it was you that calculated the number of hours, and I wish I could remember the number, that you must have dedicated towards public service. I mean, it was months and months, even years of your life, if you totaled up all of the meetings. We do miss working with you, and it is so wonderful to see you tonight. I'm so happy to be a part of presenting this to you.
Supervisor Booth?
Ms. Perkins was incredibly warm and welcoming to me. When I first met her earlier last year, I wasn't sure if I was going to run at the time, but throughout the process, she's been incredibly kind and generous, and I'm lucky. I live in District A, and so does she, so I get to bump into her every once in a while at Lefty's or wherever. But there is a reason why I personally didn't run until last year, and that was because I knew Ms. Perkins was doing a fabulous job, and I couldn't, I didn't see myself, you know, meeting the high standards that she set. So it's humbling to be in this position after you, Ms. Perkins, and I wish you all the best.
Even though we never served together, you were also very warm and welcoming to me when I was coming onboard, and I did get your chair. And several of your committees. And now I realize how much work there is to do here. Thank you.
Chris, you mentioned that park, and that park came about of willingness to compromise. And these days, it seems like compromise is a bad word. But that park, that tract of land was originally about 12 acres, and there was probably a majority of the Board that was going to sell that entire tract of land to generate money for Parks and Rec. And there was a compromise. Part of it, three acres, was sold off and for about $100,000, and then the rest was preserved and then turned over to the town of Blacksburg. And in this day and time, it's good to be able to compromise, and we were able to do that and reach that with working through and working together. So I know that we're going to take some pictures, and so I guess we'll all come on down and Susan, Roger, you can take a picture.
I'm sorry.
I'm helping her.
I'm helping her.
Next time you have a free letter.
I didn't have it.
I'm here.
He's such a smart guy.
I'm gonna have to kiss him.
You want it, Tom?
I'm sorry, you're not gonna eat one of those people's sandwiches.
Yeah.
I'm gonna stay.
I seen all that.
Almost like another one to take a picture.
In the back.
You gotta push somebody out.
I'm gonna die.
I'm gonna die.
I don't wanna stand.
I'll hold.
Okay, where you down?
I need to bring my little camera.
I shouldn't.
I should.
I'm not ready.
That's perfect.
Smile.
Here we go.
One, two, three.
All right, thank you.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more resolution.
I'm feeling very well.
That's all.
That's all there is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel very honored to be in here with you.
Well, see, it's her.
I know.
She was so nice.
Stay some words about it.
Well, and vice versa.
Oh, she was so wonderful.
Like my hero, she broke me the most beautiful dog you can imagine.
I'd say it's the wrong mom.
That would be my mother.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're representing the family.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the way she went.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
That's right, I know.
Well, if you go down the road, right inside, you can watch it.
And he has the yard signs of her name.
Yeah, so he built it up to his front.
He's tired.
He needs my work.
We're people of this time that will do things.
Oh, they're good.
Yes.
Yeah, what do you think?
What do you want me to do?
Look at you.
Smile.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chair.
Oh.
Thanks for the time.
Yeah.
So good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Carol.
Do you want to make a statement here?
I think we're losing the loss.
Let's go see.
Okay. My regular glasses are someplace else.
Everybody.
We lost our crowd.
How is the phone held?
It's really nice.
Come on. There we go.
I basically just lie down.
Well, after that wonderful presentation, I'm nervous that the next presentation is going to be just as wonderful, and so we have Tom Bland, the County Assessor, and Gary Eens with Wampler and Eens Appraisal Group will provide us an update on the county's 2019 general reassessment.
Well, if I could just sort of introduce a few comments to begin with. For people who aren't familiar with the process, the county does a general reassessment every four years. And to do that, we contract out with a company. And that company for the last, I don't know how many, Gary, do you, four, five, five reassessments, has been Wampler-Eens, so they're extremely familiar with the county, as well as Gary's from Christiansburg and grew up in Christiansburg, so his start was here to begin with. Tonight, Tom and Gary are going to be giving you a status report basically on where the project is. It's not final yet, so they're going to be telling you where we are right now with some ranges and where those values are. The notices for the new values will be going out, will be mailed to property owners October the 12th. And within those notices, it will outline how people can appeal, how they can appeal to Gary's firm either online or to request an informal hearing. If you get questions from property owners or concerns or want property values to be explained to them, the process is still with Wampler-Eens, and I would encourage you to tell people to contact them, to appeal online, to do the, to follow the process that's in their notice and request an informal hearing, and they can speak directly with Wampler-Eens, have them look at their property specifically in order to be able to get the, all the information and be heard about what their issues are. When Wampler-Eens completes the process, they're through with their side of what happens, then any appeals, the formal appeals process will start with the Board of Equalization. The Board of Supervisors does not hear appeals for individual, from individual property owners. That is a process that's formal, and it goes through the Board of Equalization, and they will begin their work sometime mid to the end of January. So tonight, as you've already mentioned, we've got both Tom Bland, the County Assessor, and Gary Eens with Wampler-Eens to tell us what the status is, and I think you're going to start the process, Tom?
Yeah, I'm basically setting the table here on how this whole process works. We are mandated by state law. State law requires counties to have general reassessments every four years unless the population is less than 50,000. The, well, every four years is required, reassessments can or annually or biannually has a limit. So we choose to go on a four-year cycle. If the state tax department sales ratio for any county or city shows a sales assessment ratio lower than 70% in the year of the general reassessment, this proves that the locality had failed to assess at 100%. So our objective is to be within at least 2%, of 100%. So we're trying our best to get close to that 100% mark. The goal of mass appraisal is to produce accurate appraisals, equitable assessments. So we want to equalize all the way across the board if we can, neighbors to neighbors, neighborhoods to neighborhoods. The primary tool to measure the outcomes of the mass appraisal is the sales ratio study, and that's the ratio of the assessed value, the sale value. Sales ratio study compares assessed values to market values is represented by open market sales based upon the most recent sales available. An open market sale is an arm link transaction between a willing seller and a willing buyer. The product is the rate, the product is the sales ratio of assessed values to sale price. Assessed values to sale price in our example is 80,000 divided by 100,000, puts you at 80%. The assessment is at 80% of the sales price. So with that example, we would have to examine and try and bring, lift the value to come to 100%. When, when Wampler Eens completes the process, they're through with their side of what happens, then any appeals, the formal appeals process will start with the Board of Equalization. The Board of Supervisors does not hear appeals for individual, from individual property owners. That is a process that's formal and it goes through the Board of Equalization, and they will begin their work sometime mid to the end of January. So tonight, as you've already mentioned, we've got both Tom Bland, the county assessor, and Gary Eens with Wampler Eens to tell us what the status is. And I think you're going to start the process, Tom?
Yeah, I'm basically setting the table with Gary here on how this whole process works. We are mandated by state law. State law requires counties to have general reassessments every four years unless the population is less than 50,000. The, well, every four years is required. Reassessments can or annually or bi-annually has a line. So we choose to go on a four-year cycle. If the state tax department sales ratio for any county or city shows a sales assessment ratio lower than 70% in the year of the general reassessment, this proves that the locality had failed to assess at 100%. So our objective is to be within at least two, 2% of 100%. We're trying our best to get close to that 100% mark. The goal of mass appraisal is to produce accurate appraisals and equitable assessments. So we want to equalize all the way across the board if we can, neighbors to neighbors, neighborhoods to neighborhoods. The primary tool to measure the outcomes of the mass appraisal is the sales ratio study. And that's the ratio of the assessed value, the sale value. Sales ratio study compares assessed values to market values is represented by open market sales based upon the most recent sales available. An open market sale is an arm link transaction between a willing seller and a willing buyer. The product is the rate, the product is the sales ratio of assessed values to sale price. Assessed values to sale price in our example is 80,000 divided by 100,000 puts you at 80%. The assessment is at 80% of the sales price. So with that example, we would have to examine it and try and bring, list the value to come to 100%. In the reassessment process, the county is divided into smaller areas called neighborhoods for the purposes of market comparison. So neighborhood is analyzed unto its own. Each property was visited by a field inspector to verify data and collect additional data from the property owners. What we're looking for is, we're looking for things that may have been added or especially subtracted so we can give them a fair and equitable value on the property. A field review is done if the homeowner, done with the homeowner if they were home. So we try to confirm that data with, the data we have on record with the property owners at best. We leave, left door hangers. So the door hangers of the property owner could reach out to us and say, if they wanted to talk about the property, they have the ability to do that. Throughout the process, neighborhood sales, land values, yearly appreciation trends, and other datas were analyzed.
What is driving this real estate market? Basically, it's a strong economy right here in the New River Valley. This is, this is the place to be, to be in Virginia, it seems like. We, just a little history, as Carol said, I'm, I'm from this county and I look forward to coming back over forty years and, and being home. I always say that I have a tape measure. I will travel, so when I'm not here, I'm elsewhere. And our company has worked in over 50 localities throughout Virginia and North Carolina. And as of this date, we will have completed 107 reassessments throughout Virginia and North Carolina, five of those being Montgomery County. So, so we do look forward to coming back here. And there are local people out in the field here work, that live right here in, in the county. So this strong economy right here in the New River Valley, and part of that is driven by the expansion of the student populations at Virginia Tech and Radford. This has created pressure on single-family homes and multifamily housing market. Anytime there's a supply and demand issue, it, it can drive cost values to go up. There's been a strong buyer demand and a declining inventory of, of homes in the area. This, this is, this is pretty much throughout the New River Valley, throughout Roanoke. When you talk to realtors, there, there's no inventory of houses right now. One realtor was quoted that, one, one realtor stated that the inventory is down 20% since this time last year. There was a newspaper article that just this month in the Roanoke Times, it was dated September the 20th, and it says, "Real estate market is strong." It says, "Virginia feels great about the real estate market," according to a poll conducted by Roanoke College. It says, "However, home buyers are slightly more concerned over fewer houses that have hit the market, driving up prices." So all this plays into the, to, you know, why the real estate market is increasing. To this day, we're still reviewing properties and nothing is final yet. So these numbers that I'm, that I'm going to give you are close, but, but we are still reviewing properties. As Carol said, the notices will be mailed out October the 12th, and then we'll start our informal hearings October the 31st. This gives the citizens enough time to receive their notice, to call our office, to make an appointment. There's various ways that they can appeal to us. They can email, we're doing the email appeal. They can do a first, a face-to-face appeal. They, we'll take a phone call. If they can't come in, then, then we'll talk to them by phone. We want to make sure they're heard and, or lettered. They can write a letter, and we treat it just as, as though they were there with us. Please, you guys, don't try to do a hearing about a property value. Send them to us. It's, it's, it's our values until we sign the reassessment book and turn it over to, to the county. So send them, send them on to us. Again, what, what is the change in value? And to this date, the decline in inventory, again, I'll keep emphasizing that, and overall, causing overall residential values to, to rise over the last forty years. This is also varies from neighborhood to neighborhood. So when I give you a number that Blacksburg has gone up a certain percentage, doesn't mean that every house in Blacksburg has gone up by that same percentage. It could change from neighborhood to neighborhood, from property to property. If we find information out about a, a home that we didn't know, or if someone has renovated it and they put it on the market and, and they updated the kitchen and so forth, that property could go up substantially. So it is from neighborhood to neighborhood, property to property. Due to the strong economy here in the New River Valley, commercial markets remain stable over the last reassessment cycle. And this is reflected in the construction industry, the hotel market, multifamily housing, the medical segment, just to name a few. This is what everyone's been waiting on, I guess. Blacksburg, this, these are the single-family residents. If we sent out the notices today, the average in Blacksburg would be between 5 and 11% increase. Again, it could change from property to property, neighborhood by neighborhood. Christiansburg is up between 3 and 6%, and the county homes are up between 3 and 5%. And again, outliers always exist, both in residential and commercial markets. The strongest market segment still is, is the multifamily housing. Rents are up. Vacancy rates are down, or vacancy rates. So there's still a high demand for apartments, especially in the student housing market. Overall, multifamily segment has seen an increase of 4 to 21%. The majority, the greatest percent again would be in, in the Blacksburg area. And overall, commercial has, has seen an increase of 4 to 9%. All these values that I'm talking about, that Tom and I are talking about today can be changed due to our hearings. When folks come in and talk to us, we're going to listen to them. We're not going to slam our fists down and say that we're absolutely right. We'll, we'll take in what they have consideration as to what they say about their property. No one knows your real estate, your home better than the person that's living there. So we will listen to what they have to say, and adjustments could be made. We'll have people that will call in and ask us to raise the assessment. So we, we get it from both ends there. Also, the Board of Equalization could make changes to our assessments after our hearings. So, so none of these values are final until the final foot and the final appeal has been heard. Are there any questions?
I'll start off with Supervisor Kip.
I don't have no question. I just appreciate all the work you do and, and I will take heed that if somebody calls me about their real estate, I'll say, "Your, your taxes went up, you call that man."
That's right. The values are mine, they're not, they're not at this board, so that.
Yeah, if value goes up, taxes go up.
That's up to you. That's totally up to you.
Thank y'all very much for what you do. Thank you.
Supervisor Fitchkowski.
Well, I think the burning question tonight is going to be the pipeline coming through our county and what effect is that going to have on those property values that it crosses?
Well, we're, I'm a historian, so I have to follow the market. The pipeline is coming through. It, it hasn't been here. So right now, there's, there's not enough data for me to give you a definite answer that it's going to affect this amount or that amount, or it's not going to affect it. There's just no data out there to, to analyze yet.
So, so what you're saying is you can't have, it can't, it can't affect an appraisal when it's not even in the ground yet?
It, it could possibly, of course, we know where it's going to be. But until we have sales that will indicate how much it's affecting the surrounding area, of course, coming through a property is, is one thing, and then the surrounding area is another, so.
So we would have to wait another four years to?
So there may be another wait and see, another four years before. You know, if people start having buyer sales between now and Board of Equalization, then adjustments may need to be made. But we're, it's, what was the statement we, we talked about today? It's, it's a point in time. Our values are, are a point in time. And so what we have right now are the sales that have occurred right up to today. So if.
So this. I don't think we saw the, maybe two sales in, in the time period, the announcement, from the announcement of the pipeline going through, through that, to that territory. We've only seen two, two sales. Now, I understand there may be some extenuating circumstances behind that because if people just kind of sit and wait and see what impact is going to have. But, you know, with two sales, that doesn't warrant a meeting.
And I'm, could you slide over and use the mic a little bit?
I'm sorry.
That, no, that's okay. There's just a.
Do I need to repeat?
I don't. Yes, if you would, please.
Okay. We've only had two sales, and two sales go to market made. It's too, it's too early in the game to know exactly how that's going to affect the overall impact of, of, of what the pipeline does to, to me. And we, we're anxious, just as anxious as everybody to see what, what happens, but it may take some while. We're, we're in a window of, of assessment time, which is prior to actually going in the grant.
So you would not be looking at comparing it with other counties that have similar pipelines through them? It would just be based on the sales of property here in this county that have pipeline on it?
It would be, it would be this county. We finished Nelson County, which is another county that's affected by pipeline, and it went into effect in 2018. And the same thing, it was coming. It, it had not happened yet. So again, there, there's going to be some waiting and to see. One thing we did do was wait till the very end of the reassessment cycle to, to value those properties. We've had listeners out there to visit the properties, but to put the final value on, we're waiting till the very last minute to see if anything comes in before we make our final decision. So we have, have waited. And I know, I know Preston Forest is, is a good example. That, you know, that's a neighborhood that's close. And so we, you know, we're watching sales right there along Preston Forest Drive, and there have been a few that occurred in 17 and 18. So we, we still need to, you know, look at those sales before we make our final decisions.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Demonts?
To piggyback on Steve's comments about the pipeline a little bit, I also anticipate that you might get some citizens in the pipeline path that go through the equalization process. Do you think, I guess, can you speculate on whether or not that timeframe might give you more data to draw conclusions on?
They, they should have copies of appraisals, I guess, that the right-of-way appraisers did. So part of those appraisals, there should be a before and after value, and, you know, we would love to see those if they would, you know, bring them to us.
And then just, I guess, more out of curiosity, and I, I ask this because on, on my street in my neighborhood, if a house goes on the market and I leave in the morning for work and there's a sign, when I get home, there's an under contract on the top of the sign same day. And we've had two this past week with the same, where I left and then came home and it was under contract. Are there particular areas in, say, Blacksburg where I am or Christiansburg that, that are trending hotter, I guess, neighborhoods, communities, parts of the communities?
There are. Blacksburg, again, as you saw, had the greatest increase, but we have seen some sales that were shown that probably need to go up 25% or more, some neighborhoods. So, you know, we, we are looking at it neighborhood by neighborhood. I think Montgomery County is divided up into probably three or 400 different segments, different neighborhoods. So we break them down and, and look at it. So that means, you know, we're comparing Oak Tree Village to Oak Tree Village and Wyatt Farms to Wyatt Farms. So we are analyzing, you know, sales within your neighborhood. You know, when you get out into the rural areas, you sort of have to spread out a little bit. So, but, but the subdivisions are, there have been a lot of sales to go by.
And then in my district specifically, I have a pretty high density of multifamily properties. I know the last reassessment, four years ago, multifamily was hit especially hard because they are very valuable and increasingly more and more valuable. And here it says increases from around 4 to 21%.
Yes.
Would it be safe to assume that Blacksburg will be on the higher end of that for multifamily as well?
They will be, yes.
And then that, I'm kind of asking these questions somewhat to make a point or to ask a clarifying question. We do reassessment every four years. Is there a benefit to doing it annually or every two years? And I ask that just because something like a 21%, I'm, I'm a property manager by trade, so that's my day job. And I know that when the reassessments come to me in my office, that with my owners, we make the decision, we look at a reassessment, and something like that is an unavoidable cost of doing business, but what it translates into is a higher cost of rent because you can't take that kind of hit in your budget and not have to make it up somewhere else. And so that's why I ask, is there any benefit to looking at two-year or annual assessments? So it's a little bit less at a time.
It is. I, I think a good example would be probably Roanoke County, Roanoke City. They reappraise every year. But I, I can tell you this, their reassessment budget is, is a million, over a million dollars a year. And so I'm putting my sales hat on now as a reassessment contractor. You're, you're paying us 60% of that, that price to do it in four years. So I know the sticker shock is, is, is bad sometimes, but I know that there were years when Roanoke County, Roanoke City didn't see any increase at all, but yet they were spending a million dollars a year in having an assessment office. So I, you have to weigh the good with the bad, I guess.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, Supervisor Demonts actually asked a number of the questions that I had in mind. I just want to follow up on one thing. So when the folks that are impacted by the pipeline, that have been coming to us and saying that the, their land assessment is going to go down, okay? So they come, if we get calls, then we refer them back to you, and you want them to bring, if they have any information about assessment from the pipeline going through their properties?
Probably any appraisal, pictures of the property, if, you know, if they've made that, the cut through there and they can, they can see it.
And then for folks that live around where this has happened, they also have said their property values are going to go down. So how do you anticipate handling, like, if you get calls from citizens about that? How, are you just going to meet with them individually, or?
We'll, we'll talk to them individually as they make appointments to come in and, and speak to us. But, but again, they, they would have to bring us proof why they think, you know, why the value has dropped.
Okay.
And again, it, it's all about sales. So if they bring the sales that we don't know about, then, you know, we'll be happy to, to look at those.
Okay.
Or listings.
Okay. Because I, I just anticipate maybe some of us would get calls about that, so.
You will.
Yeah.
Yes, you will.
Because it's been an ongoing concern throughout the process.
Supervisor Bo?
So I've got a number of questions. It's not just the house, it's the property too. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So for someone who has a home up on Brush Mountain, and the pipeline can be seen from their house, and there's woods between their house and the pipeline, and you can see, you know, the swath of land that has been cleared and the pipe right there, if there hasn't been a sale, there will be no increase or decrease comparatively.
Probably not from that property that's miles away, is just looking at that.
It's not miles, it's like 100 feet of woods between where they finished mowing next to their house to the pipeline. I mean, you can see the pipeline right through the woods.
Right. Those we'll be looking at. As we, as we look at the individual properties that have actually. Those we'll be looking at as we, as we look at the individual properties that have actually been impacted by the pipeline. We'll spread, fan out and, and look at those that are close by and see. But, you know, some of it is, it's judgment. You know, it's, it's a judgment call. But again, I have to go with facts that are, that are happening, but.
So there's, if there's no sale and no listing, it's.
And if you can't see it from the property, then it, you know, you have to kind of look at it as someone that were willing to sell that property. You know, would they point it out and say, you know, just right over there is the pipeline, you know?
Well, in the house that I'm thinking of, you can't miss it because you see it through. But, um, but what about the incineration zone and the blast zone is plus or minus a mile or whatever it is? I mean, all of Preston Forest practically, practically is in that zone. And you would think that that will, would impact the cost of the homes.
And, and again, that's why we waited till right now to make these decisions on the pipeline properties, looking at sales in Preston Forest.
And, um, you mentioned two sales. I know of two sales up in Preston Forest. I can't imagine that I'm, I know all the sales up in Preston Forest, but you're saying that there really are only two?
The ones that I know of are actually followed down through Toronto.
Huh.
It actually happened in the middle of it.
Can you, uh, can you use the mic, please?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
The ones that I know of were, in, in doing my review of the, of the path at the Gary, uh, there were two sales, or basically a sale of two parcels went right through the middle of it. It sold in 2017 higher than what we had assessed for and wasn't from Mountain Valley Pipeline. So it, that's, you know, that could be an outlier. Who knows? Like outliers do exist throughout. We don't even, we don't even look at the Mountain Valley Pipeline purchase. And that's completely different animal. So.
That property that Tom was referring to had a, the power line he's been through it already. And the pipeline in that case almost followed the, the power line. And we were, we were 15% low on that sale. So on the old assessment.
So you mentioned something about a before and after appraisals. I'm new to this board this year, so I didn't pick up on this prior. So did every property along the pipeline get a before and after appraisal by somebody?
Just in, in, I, we've done some right away appraisals and, and our company has. And, and we, we've always, part of the, uh, right away appraisal process, if you appraise any damages to the property or you appraise the take or the temporary construction easement, and then you always give a value afterwards. So they may have copies of these appraisals. I don't know that, but they, they may have them. And if they do, we would love to see them if they bring them in.
And so the pipeline is temporary to a certain extent. Right now, um, the pipeline is still above ground. At some point in time, it's going to go underground and they're going to cover it up and eventually they're going to be done with it. So would you expect that the homes along the pipeline, when they're quite close, would have a negative effect now, but in four years or our next appraisal, it might bump up more significantly because you discounted it at this point in time or no?
We'll, we'll just, that's one of those wait and see scenarios there.
How many sales make a market? You mentioned two sales weren't enough to really.
The gentleman, the train Tom and I said one. He always said if I have a sale, then we, we know what something's worth. But we, we look at all of them. We start and we analyze, uh, we start, when we first came here, we started looking at 16 sales. And throughout the process, then we switched to the 17 sales. And now we're looking at the 18 sales and late, uh, 18 and late 17. So we'll, we'll look at as many as, as we can find in a market area.
Even as they're winding down, we continue to feed the sales that our deed readers find that were done in early September. So this is continuing on to the last minute.
This, this is a good county as far as the Commissioner Revenue's Office, they keep good data here. You wouldn't believe some of the counties that we go into that, um, they haven't done transfers for over a year. They're reading weekly, daily here in, in this county. So I, I commend, um, Montgomery County for.
There's only four on our staff.
So if, um, the rate is going to be posted on October 12th, when's the last, like the last day of September? If any houses were sold at that point in time, they would be included or where does that cut off? September 15th?
The day we send the file to the printer. Somewhere around, somewhere around, I'm sorry, Chris.
It's just, I know that there are folks who really do want to hear what you have to say.
I did. Somewhere around October 7th.
The 3rd.
October 3rd is when the file will go to the printer and is all cut off at, at that point.
So if a house is sold, does it have to close? Is that what it is?
It has to be recorded in the clerk's office.
Okay.
One thing, the last thing that we do, we, we, we're members of the, um, New River Valley MLS. Our company is, we're pulling listings also. And we're looking at properties that are for sale. So that will give us the indication of the high end of, of values, uh, the sales. We'll make sure we read about these homes, these properties that are for sale. We'll, we'll look at those. So, uh, so we've already analyzed, we're analyzing sales and then we'll look at the for sales. So may pick up on some things there as well.
So, um, in Blacksburg, uh, people are buying homes at listed price versus maybe throughout the county, it's not. So it might be more meaningful, the listings in Blacksburg at the last minute?
Could, could be, yes. We, and, and we've seen some sales just out walking and talking to properties that have bought, folks that have bought properties in Blacksburg. And they really wanted some of those houses sometimes, you know, they do. And when, sometimes you have to dis, disqualify those, you know, especially when, you know, they didn't go through a real, a Realtor. And, uh, you know, somebody said, you know, I want to buy your home. What do you want for, you know, that's, that scenario is a seller.
And you would discount that because that's not.
Sometimes, you know, if it falls within that price per square foot range that we're seeing, but sometimes they're way out. So we, you know, we kick out the high sales, we, you know, kick out the, uh, low sales that, um, follow sold to us dollar or, 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 you know, bankruptcy sale. We have to kick those out.
Is there a listing of all neighborhoods somewhere? Is that available to the public?
It is. It, they're just codes. I don't know what they would mean to them.
Oh, so.
Preston Forest, well, I was giving you an example. Preston Forest is MR312003.
Yeah, but do you have a chart that has that code and where the heck that is? Somewhere?
No.
There's some, sometimes that there's a, there's a, if it's a townhouse, if it's a townhouse neighborhood.
Just needs a regular.
If it's a townhouse neighborhood, we generally label, you know, Oak Forest towns. That, but when you get, when you start getting into, um, neighborhoods that are, uh, not so definitive, uh, older neighborhoods, especially like that along, uh, maybe along Montgomery Street, Manhattan and Blacksburg, uh, that, that's kind of, uh, they may be a, a neighborhood in itself. You may have a neighborhood that changes and can go as a progress through right there. It could change right there at that corner. But, uh, you have a lot of, in the historical district, you have a lot of older homes that are bringing unbelievable prices. It's just, it makes you head spin when you see what they're, what they're bringing. A lot of that occurs because there is a partnership of talent and community housing partners to upgrade these homes, which is wonderful because I love seeing old homes being repurposed and reused. But those neighborhoods can change in, in a spot.
Um, one of your earlier slides, the legal requirement slide, it might've been right after your cover slide. In the third bullet, you had 70% uh, uh, compared. Is, is that 70% compared to the 80% on like two slides later? Is that how that's calculated or is that something completely different?
Seventy percent is, is what the state uses as the bottom of the ratio. If a county drops below 70% on their assessments, then that's when they start penalizing.
Okay.
Paraphrasing more about that than, than me, but.
Well, it's used by the state to determine whether or not they're going to fail you on a reassessment. And they can make you go back and redo it all over again if the ratio falls 70% or below. It is required that your ratio is supposed to be market 100% or as close therein as you can get. I'm already saying something. I don't know what.
Well, you're, you're kind of leaving out that the state fears that some localities may purposely lower their market that reassess in order to, um, get certain benefits that, that they get for having a lower, um, assessment value. So that's really the reason they do it.
Well, there are, there have been localities who have contracted out for their reassessment. Their contractors have not made these over 70% and they have, and I don't know that there was incentive to do that. But Marty's talking about, there are a lot of formulas where they are driven by lower real estate values and you get more state money from it. So there's a number of ways that happens, but the state has said, and I assume they still continue to do it rigorously, if you fall below 70% in your reassessment, they can throw it out and tell you to go back and redo it.
But is that house by house or is that county what, county average?
Total.
Total. So when you take out the commercial buildings that change potentially 21%, you know, we're in the 70, 70 percentile at that point in time because they're, you know, if you use it 21%, they're at 79% assessed, uh, market value in that calculation, right? Am I thinking about that correctly?
That was just one segment of, of the total.
Right. Do we need to be concerned about that if the economy heats up and there's some segment that's really hot that we need to actually probably assess in the third year or maybe the second year just because it's really hot? For example, if tech says, oh, we're going to have 5,000 more students, you know? And now all of a sudden, all student housing hasn't turned around, multifamilies haven't turned around enough. The demand's too high and, you know, that piece of the, uh, that segment goes up over 30%?
But you're only required to do it once every four years. So your value will be set for four years. They'll look at it again when you reassess. So the 21%, I'm assuming you're talking about multifamily housing, that's your increase. That's where, where you, how much it has increased to get to the market. Overall, what you're looking at is your total value to sales needs to be as close to 100% as you can get. And that's why you're seeing some of those increases. That's the increase level.
Every four years, it has to be as close.
Every four years.
Versus the 70% is, they're purposely not assess, uh, pre-assessing it for 100%. They're purposely assessing it for 70?
No, I, I think what you're saying, what, and I'm trying to understand on page two, you've got your legal requirement. They do an assessment in the first year after you do your assessment. And if it, those sales in that 12 months fall at 69% of countywide, then we now have to do a reassessment and we're going to be talking with Marty about the job that you did. But.
I got you. That's very helpful. Thank you.
So that's the way I took that slide. Is that, am I thinking correct?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay.
You're absolutely correct. And you're seeing the results of 5,000 students coming flooding in, not to mention rapid.
Sure.
And that was what we were facing back in '06, '05, '06, '07, when the real estate market, we didn't know where it was going to stop. So we, you know, at that point, we were waiting till the last minute and still tweaking values, so to speak, because the market was just going up so fast.
Well, and also your increases back then were what, 30, 32%?
Thirty, yeah, 34 and.
50% a year or more, 50% a year.
How do you know if a kitchen or some home improvement actually occurred?
Just knocking on the door and talking to that property owner. Folks are proud of, of what they've done and to their homes. And building permits that come through Tom's office, um, all these photos out there from Realtor.com, the MLS. We, we, we look at them all.
We also look, we're also looking with this trend of Airbnb's. We have spent the past couple of weeks perusing the Airbnb websites and we have caught at least three, maybe four that no one knew about. And so they are being, um, assessed appropriately, so.
Interesting. So for your slide that you do have estimated single family residence changes. So if I'm looking at Blacksburg, for example, five to 11%, that's over four years. So it's basically about 1% to maybe 3% a year. Am I saying that properly?
Yes.
So inflation's two to 3%, so basically it's a tad more than inflation. Is that safe to say?
Yes, and that, and there have been some articles out there that was stating that the real estate market has gone up 12% just over last year. So, and, and we saw that. We're seeing values over 2017 now increase.
But those would be outliers? Is that what you're saying?
Well, there's, it's starting to be a pattern.
So for example, if Blacksburg on an annualized basis over the last four years increased one to 3%, Christiansburg increased from less than 1% to less than, to about one and a half percent a year, less than inflation.
Right. But again, neighborhood by neighborhood.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I had a question. I think you, I think you addressed it, except mine was in the opposite direction because you were talking about when you disqualify a property because it's sold so high outside the market range. What about if it sells like really below?
We have to disqualify those as well. Bankruptcy, sales.
Well, there's one in particular I know of that was a, uh, lady's mother was living in the house and they moved her to a nursing home and, and the lady actually, the daughter owned the house. They lived in Kentucky and they didn't want to deal with it. So they sold it.
Those would be probably not arms length sales. It has to be a, a willing buyer or willing seller, but both have to be informed also. An informed buyer and an informed seller. So sometimes, you know, when you have a, a property that was left to you and.
Something they just want to be.
They just want to dump it.
Yeah.
It's a state sale.
Close, yeah. Okay, that's all.
Well, first I'm going to help you all with your job. There is this house that people were driving all over the county today to see nature right there in the front yard. And Supervisor King's house, he's got bears out there and everybody loves that house. And I'll tell you, I think that should probably be assessed double or triple. It's for a value.
Let me tell you something. I live in the poor section of Montgomery County. The further you go, the poorer they are. And I live in their last house.
Well, uh, seriously though, thank you very much. I do have a couple of questions in regards to, you had said the housing market is really. I do have a couple of questions in regards to, you had said the housing market is really heated up in Blacksburg. I think Vice Chair Demonts talked about that. And I, my family has dealt with real estate my entire life and those bargains that Supervisor Shepard alluded to just aren't happening right now in Montgomery County. We can't, we're not finding those. As a matter of fact, we're looking now and buying outside of the county because you can't find that bargain. And I appreciate the fact that you're reassessing at the very last moment to try to capture, but you're historians and so you're working with the data and the facts. And I was, thank you very much for your work. And I know that Vice Chair Demonts has a question. I'm going to open it up and see if any other additional questions, but like I said, that house, I'm telling you, there were people all over the county coming to that house.
He started charging admission, they were paying it. Supervisor Bones' questions actually led me to another question. So I know the, so in Blacksburg, you've got the average range from 5% to 11%. Would it be, I guess, fair to assume that that's not, if you were looking at a chart, it's not going steady? It could go like this, you know, like one year you might get a 3% increase, one year you might get five, you might get a 1% and you're doing a net 5% to 11% over the four years?
It was kind of doing this and then in 17 it took an upturn. And I still feel like it's this way right now. And, but we are, as I said, we're looking at properties that are listed for sale right now too, to make sure that we're not starting to see it level off and.
One of the sort of I have is what's going to happen to the interest rates. If interest rates start going up, we're going to level off. But if it level off, I don't think you're going to see any decline in this community. You're going to see, like we did, we were not impacting in the last bulge or we stayed flat after going from a 30% increase it leveled at the year I came here. And the next two reassessments just saw it continue to be flat until now.
Well, and I kind of, you know, property management, real estate, it's what I've made my career as, what I studied in college. I kind of geek out over all things real estate related. And so I'd never before, and I appreciate you bringing this up because I'd never before had heard of the rate of inflation being tied to the rate of increase in real estate. Is there any kind of pairing there? Is that just coincidental that the real estate increases seem to be keeping pace with the rate of inflation if you average them over four years or?
No, we just watch the real estate rates, you know, as far as how it compares to inflation. Yeah, I'm not sure. I haven't studied that line because, you know, we just weren't following the data of just the real estate market.
So maybe one night when I can't sleep, I'll see if there's been any financial news on that. I'll let you know. I'll let you know. That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor King, did you have another question?
Yeah, we was talking about the pipeline and all this, what is going to decrease properties. Is there some way we can keep up with that? If one property is worth $100,000, pipeline costs go to 50?
That would be a matter of watching, you know, deeds come through if you knew, you know, what properties that were impacted by the pipeline and just watch. But we don't have those, you know, the properties that are in that blast zone or wherever, we don't have those actually in a neighborhood.
The only thing we have as far as the pipeline goes is the actual deeds, deed of right of, so we know exactly the exact properties that have been contracted would be able to dig that text in the middle of them. And that's about all we have. And we can pay attention to that area and that region, but it's got to be pretty immediate now in order to get an idea of what's going to happen with that, so.
I was just talking, excuse me, about in the long run.
Probably Helen's office could help us with that.
I mean, we can figure out a way to do that. I mean, it's, we have to kind of get a flag to kind of say, okay, if you think it's going to be going through there, have our deed readers kind of pull aside and hand it to me. We can keep a file on it.
This board's been, you know, talking about that, what this pipeline's going to cost the property owners and everything. I'd just like to see if we could keep an eye on that and see what it does actually cost.
Good idea.
Supervisor Bow.
Getting back to the Great Recession back 2008, '09, and you said it was flat, it didn't go up. Is that because people didn't put their houses, was there much less turnover at that time because people just didn't want to sell their houses?
We've always had plenty of sales in the county. It's just the value stayed more constant at that time or consistent.
During that time, there was more investment in land. We saw more that what kept us flat was that was the land sales because the land sales, the per acre value, the sales value was going up. And the houses, you know, you may have seen a dip in some of the houses, but that land on the overall, that's how it was done on the overall average. That's what kept us flat.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you very much and I appreciate the kind words that you had about our commission of revenue. We all think that Helen does a real good job and we're very proud to have her.
Thank you.
All right. The next item is a public address. I believe that there's one individual who signed up for public address. Each speaker will have up to five minutes. Please state your name and address. This is not a time for the board to interact with speakers. This is a time for the board to listen to the speaker. The person signed up is Sandra Sladek and.
Anne.
Please state your name and address.
Sandra Sladek, 4254 Fortress Drive, Blacksburg, Virginia. First of all, I sent all of you a letter and I'm just going to read it and add a couple of things. I live on Fortress Drive, which is the next road towards Parisburg from Colbank Hollow. So we are just over the county line. We had one house for sale for two years. The woman has developed cancer, so they've taken it off the market. And another one that was listed that they had to drop $25,000. So Blacksburg town might be doing real well, but our street and we're really close to town hasn't done quite as well. The letter that I sent was regarding the planning and zoning and went on with that. I attended the meeting last week and despite, I believe, all the speakers that were there, which Chairman Tuck was there, I'm guessing were 20 people that spoke. All of those were against the public utility substation being established, but it was approved. And I know it's only approved by the planning and not by you, but that's another area of discussion. I know some were, at the end of the meeting verbally expressed their dissatisfaction after the decision. I hope you can understand that. It's been a very long and frustrating past few years for many of those that were at the meeting. When asked about the notification during the meeting, excuse me, what I was concerned about was that despite the county following the law, and I don't know where that law is written or what the, if it's a county ordinance or how it's determined, but we went door to door, I was not one of them, but volunteers went door to door trying to tell people in the area, asking them and telling them about the planning commission meeting. Not one of them knew of the meeting or of the proposal. Volunteers tried to get some to come and if you saw, well, you didn't see, that's another point. Some people did come to the meeting based on the fact that they had been educated about the meeting on the door to door we contacted. When I, when asked about the notification during the meeting, we were told that everything that was required was done, maybe even more than what was required. I believe that requirements were that a notice was placed in the Roanoke Times, signs really too small to be read as you're driving by, were placed at the site and I'm guessing that there may have been a notification of it on the website. But I don't believe that that is enough, especially for that area of the county. Most of the people in that area do not have internet. I know some of the people who live in valleys, so they don't even really have cell service. They do not get the Roanoke Times, so they wouldn't have seen the notice there and the signage was not really large enough or enough for people to understand. We need a better way to notify those who could be negatively affected by any project and especially one that can physically harm one's health, as this one will. I'm requesting that at least postcards or letters be sent to those in the area so that they have better notification. I know it was discussed at the meeting that there is an area newsletter for part of that area. I don't know who's, who could be the liaison to make sure that that newsletter can be sent out to the people in the area, but I was really disappointed that not one of about 100 people had heard about the meeting. I went to the county website trying to get some information because some of the data and information about carcinogenic chemicals, I wanted to write down and I couldn't find the tape of the meeting and talked to someone and they said, well, those meetings are not taped and I don't understand why. So I'm again requesting that the county taped their meetings just like this one is taped. I'm guessing it's not that much effort and that those tapes be made available to those residents who might need them. Thank you for your attention.
There's not any other else in the room. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? I know we've got just a couple of people actually. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. And the next item is consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Fell moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Biggs and a second by Supervisor Shepard. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakaski?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is new business, ratification of declaration of local state of emergency on September the 16th, 2018. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakaski?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is proclamation of fire prevention week, October the 7th through the 13th. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second? Oh, sorry, sorry. Thank you. Motion by, I know, motion by Supervisor King, second by Supervisor Shepard. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakaski?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bell?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ahs.
Next item is county administrators report.
I have several things. The first thing is I do have an update from Matt Hobson with the 911 authority on the radio project. This has been prepared and I'll just pass that out for everyone. The second thing I want to mention to everyone is the RFP for the former sheriff's office was issued on September the 6th and that's proposals are supposed to come in October the 2nd, which is, I believe, next week. The Thompson and Litton was the contractor to look at the feasibility report on the conversion of the Ryner Fire Station to the Ryner Rescue Squad. That report, the first draft of that report should be coming in next week also. I'll just remind everyone that October the 15th is the community meeting in Ryner to discuss the parks and rec needs in that area and what people might like to see in a park there next to the fire station. We will have our master plan contractor there to hear comments from citizens in that area. And also we'll need to schedule a community meeting for Eastern Montgomery. If you all can think about, the calendars are filling up quickly, so if you all can think about what days you may have open, we, I think, have used all the Mondays. We may have to move to an alternate date. In order to do it, we have asked that our master plan people complete their project by the end of December, so we'll want to go ahead and get that scheduled. So we'll float some dates from our office later on if you'll just keep in mind what you have available, because I know between legislative dinners and community meetings and board meetings and joint meetings with the school board, the calendars are starting to fill up. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Wow, thank you. Next up, county attorneys report.
It may make sense just to make a quick comment about notice requirements since that question was brought up. The state law mandates the requirement of a board or any locality has to comply with when they're taking certain actions under land use law, which is what the Speaker was referring to, an SUP or a zoning ordinance. The planning commission and board supervisors both are required to advertise and they're required to advertise in a paper of general circulation in the county, which is, we use the Roanoke Times. Now you have to advertise it two successive weeks. It can only, they have to be a week apart, it can't be a week before the hearing date. So there's minimum requirements with that. They're also required to send out a notification to properties that have joined the property that's in question of a possible board action. So those property owners are actually given actual notice. Then in our, in our county zoning ordinance, we also have what's deemed, what we call the placard notification, which is not required by state law, but it's something we do in addition. And those are the small signs that the Speaker talked about. Those are placed at areas where, where traffic or residents can see that there's a possible action coming forward and it'll have a public hearing date on there. It'll have a number generally to call if you have questions. So those are the requirements that, and also we post everything on the county's website as well, so there's notification there. So that's what we're required to do and then the placard is in addition to what state law requires. I don't know if you have any questions. If not, that's all I got.
Thank you. Next is supervisor reports and let's see if I can scroll up. Supervisor Bow.
No report.
Supervisor Shepard?
No report.
Supervisor King?
Yeah, I got a little bit. On this report here, could you call him tomorrow and ask him for a completion date?
I certainly will.
I appreciate that. And I got my tax bill. I've been on here for six years and I've been meaning to bring this up. And I got it in the car, I was going to bring it in. How did this come about doing away with county stickers? We're still paying for them, but we don't get one.
That's before my time.
That's before my time too.
So I'm looking to.
Are you talking about for your?
For your stickers on the windshield.
We're in the town and we, and we don't have the town one either. We pay the 25 bucks. I'm trying to think back there. Isn't that when Carol, we had some big discussion about that? And then there was also the part where we were concerned that if people didn't have them and they went to the recycle places, they couldn't be identified as county residents. We had a discussion about that, but what was the reason that we, I can't remember why we did that? Was it too bulky or?
I think it came back to a request and it was looked at from the terms of efficiency. You had to buy the decals, they had to sell the decals. They didn't serve the same purposes they had previously in terms of what decals were used for. And the thought was that we needed the money from the fee, but there really wasn't the need for the decal anymore. And any more detail than that, my mind can't remember, but I probably have some information written up somewhere that I will look for tomorrow.
And we all did away with like Christiansburg, Blacksburg and the county all at the same time.
I have to tell you, I really get heartburn paying for something I don't get. And I think, well, I think I'm going to bring back up, either bring the stickers back And I think, well, I think I'm gonna bring back up, either bring the stickers back or do away with that fee. That's just my opinion.
I will certainly see what additional information I can find about the reasons that the sitting board at the time decided to make that decision.
Well, I just, I mean, I just, I get emotional, I'm just, I get upset for people paying for something that they don't get. You might as well go to a store, throw $23.50 in the door, turn around and walk out.
Marty, you don't remember, do you? I can't remember.
I had to look, I probably too have a big file. I think it was efficiency of government kind of issue. And really, you're not paying for the sticker, you, the fee was just going as another revenue source, basically.
Another tax.
Revenue.
I mean, what could, when you pay your taxes, you gotta pay that $23.50 or whatever it be.
Correct.
So you're paying it already, so what's the harm if somebody hand you a sticker over the counter with your receipt?
Well, hey, I think we're saving money before part of that $23.50 went toward paying for the sticker.
Sticker, yeah, that's true.
Now, you don't have to pay the sticker, so we have more revenue.
And, and I believe there was, there was a, a separate notice mailed. We got a separate notice and that did away with the processing and mailing costs of having to send a separate notice and it was combined with the, uh, personal property tax.
It all comes from one bill, mine did.
But it didn't used to. I think before you had to, a letter had to be sent out separately.
And you actually, you actually paid.
And then, right, and an application and you had to complete that and send it back in or come in and purchase it.
And buy it at the, either ten, either the two towns or the county.
Right.
That's right. But we can...
My only observation is people dumping trash and, or they coming, you know, where I live, there's maybe some folks that come from Radford over on the Plum Creek Recycling Center and there's no county sticker. Over at Price's Fork where the other place I, I send my trash or take my trash, I don't know that there's many people coming from out of the county there, but they, you know, people do say that they're actually coming from Pulaski and, and putting trash in our, uh, dumpsters, but I, I don't know.
Well, there are some of those site workers that ask for your drivers license, see where you live, because I've had that happen.
Oh.
Well, I know there's some people from Floyd coming the other end and...
So...
I would just like to see the county stickers come back. It's just like stickers, like our flag, we need to get our flag done and hung. The, and I'm glad to see the stickers getting back up on the first responders' vehicles, the little county seal. We need to be proud of Montgomery County. It looks like we're trying to hide everything's got to do with Montgomery County. And this is one thing I'm gonna push. I hope that's supported on, that's all.
Supervisor Fitchakowski?
I attended the onward NRV event last week and, uh, that was my first time there and I, those folks are really doing a very good job promoting our county and, uh, helping us to secure more businesses. Uh, I think they, they doing a great job. And of course today, the, uh, the dedication of the new state police office in Christiansburg, um, something that, um, I have heard my entire career with the state police, has finally come true, even though it's not the permanent site. Um, I think it's a very good day for Montgomery County that we have this, um, office here to help improve our, or their response time for us. So I think it's a real good thing. That's all I got.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, I have a few things. I attended with Steve and, um, our delegate Nick Rush was actually one of the speakers and did a really good job and, and come to find out that he was responsible for getting the funding for the two individuals, right, Steve, that are working out of that office. And so, um, and then David Hagan actually contributed the building that is on that site, is where the V dot, all the V dot stuff is. And then, um, then it was finished inside. The inside looks completely different than the outside. I mean, it's really nice in there.
It is nice.
Yeah, so that was, that was good, we got to do that.
In my 25 years, I didn't have an office that nice.
I know, I figured that you might be a little upset, but anyway. Okay, I have a few things. Okay, on the animal care and adoption center, I just wanted to give you some facts and what we're gonna do is we're gonna actually send this to you guys in email for, or not email, but in the county administrator's weekly update. Um, these are the year-end statistics and I'll just give you a few of them. And this is for the fiscal year 17 through 18. 61% of the animals were adopted, 20% were reclaimed by their owners, and 14% were transferred to rescue organizations. And we had a 95% live release rate for fiscal year 17 through 18, which was two percentage points above the year before. So, um, everyone is really proud of that because that 2% is in the first year of operation while handling, uh, 359% increase in animal intakes, because we've got the caps coming in. Also, they had some, they had a lizard and a, they got all kinds of stuff over there. And, um, so, in Virginia, um, that's really a good, uh, to have that 95% live release rate when the, um, average is 78% in Virginia, so we're ahead of that. And 24% of the animals spent some time in foster care, so we want to give a shout out to all the volunteers that, um, agree to foster animals in, in their homes. Um, the I-81, uh, if, if there are folks out there that haven't gone to our website, montvirginia.com, M-O-N-T-V-A dot com, and scrolled down to the I-81 study, please do so before September 30th and fill out the little, um, online survey. Craig and I and Sarah attended a chamber event last Tuesday and the discussion was on I-81 and Craig has forwarded to you some of the information from that meeting in an email, I believe, last Wednesday. Uh, on, um, Sandra's concerns about the, um, notifications and the, um, placement of the signs. On the signs, like I noticed even on the Clay Street, you have to really, they are small, so if you really want to know what it says, you gotta like really slow down or you gotta make an effort to read it. I don't know if that's something that would help if they were bigger. I know bigger costs more, but I don't know if that would be something that could be looked at. And the other thing is, um, is there ever a time, Marty, you might know this, but is there ever a time where notifications are sent out to more than just the adjoining land owners, like if it's a big thing or, you know, have we ever done that before? It seemed like to me we did it for something, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I know when we do big projects like upgrades of the zoning ordinance or something like that.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
We will generally reach out to...
Yeah.
The developing community to get their input, um, or anyone else who may be affected by those big changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but...
Um, another thing, I, I agree that I, I really think, and I've talked to Supervisor Demontson to Craig about this, our planning commission meetings need to be taped because we need to have access as board members who might not have attended the meeting or citizens that couldn't, just like, you know, in Blacksburg, you can watch the, the planning commission meetings on TV. We need to have access to that. Okay, what does that mean? It means it costs money because we don't have the personnel right now to do that. So that's something that I would like to see brought up in budget planning, along with a grant writer, by the way. But anyway, I really like to see that because I think that would help, um, in being more, you know, visible to the public with what we're doing with our meetings. And as we start to grow out from our two towns, I can see things like the Clay Street development happening, maybe somewhere else and you have all these people coming and not all of us can attend the planning commission meetings, so it'd be sort of neat to be able to, sort of, to see our planning commission members in action in our planning department. So, um, I would support, uh, making some effort to get those, um, line, I guess you should say, or whatever. Maybe, I don't know if there's anything we could do now. I have to wait till next year if we can get enough support for that kind of thing. Um, and then, let's see, did I cover everything? Yeah, I think I've got everything and, um, oh, notification. Our community meeting in Blacksburg last week, we only had 12 people there, I believe. And that was sort of sad because, um, I think that because it was the first one, maybe we didn't get the word out. I'm only hoping that for the next coming, um, meetings that, you know, there's, you know, they're sort of out here, we're talking about them now. I know we mentioned it at one of the board meetings that we're having it, but for some reason, we didn't have a good turnout. And I know that before we've had a good turnout, I don't know if it had to do with having it at 6 o'clock when people are going home to eat dinner. I know before we've had community meetings at 7:00, I don't know if that's a better time, but I really like to see a sort of look at that, like, we, that's a lot of time for staff and for all of us to put into community meetings and I, and it's neat to have the community come. So if there's a better way that we can PR that and get the word out, I would be, um, more than supportive to do that. And that's it.
Vice Chair Demonts?
Um, just a couple of things and to piggyback on what you were just saying about community meetings, I think one, um, factor that was missing from the Blacksburg community meeting was a draw. And we've got a draw at the Reiner meeting and at the Shausville Elston meeting in that we're bringing people there to talk about parks and so I think that'll automatically generate more interest. Um, but we didn't, we didn't have a, you know, we're gonna have this Blacksburg community meeting because we want to discuss this library or something like that. And I think, um, that was kind of a, a missing component to that meeting, so there just wasn't as much interest as there would have been if we were discussing a future park or something like that. And that's just my opinion. And then also talking about the notice requirements, and I'm looking at you, Marty. Um, so if we notify adjacent property owners, do we send a postcard, a letter, something in the mail to them?
Yeah, planning needs care of that.
So adjacent property owners have to be notified. Is there a way, and then again, I know it costs more to do this, but is there a way that we could, instead of just being adjacent property owners, and especially in the more rural areas where you might have two, three, four adjacent property owners, depending on the size of tracts of land, is there a way to expand that out and say, maybe, let's notify everybody within, um, 100 yards or, I, I wouldn't, I'd need to look at a map to know what would be a relative...
Or incineration zone, you know?
Yeah, something like that. I mean, would it be possible to, because I, I, I understand the point that, you know, notification is very important and if people don't know about it, um, you know, I'm one of those nerds that, you know, if I see a sign posted on a piece of property, I'll pull off the road and get out of my car and go read it. But again, I geek out on real estate issues, so I mean, it, I think there's some things that we could look at that would improve the notification system. I know that we're following the law, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't try harder if, if citizens don't feel informed, because, you know, we definitely want them to be informed.
The board would require more, or they already are with the placard, but you could, it just, if you're gonna make more property owners get notified, we just need to make sure it's clear that planning can administer whatever that is. I mean, because if they don't, then they're violating ordinance and...
Right.
The action's supposed to challenge, so you want to make sure whatever we said is something that can be easily administered and they can figure out which properties are, are to get the notification, which ones, where do you draw the line?
So then that could be maybe a topic of discussion in a work session for a future meeting? Um, just looking at our notification requirements and seeing if there's anything that we think, you know, our board thinks might help us provide better notice. Um, and then on to more lighthearted things, I think I've already mentioned this, but if I haven't, the Parks and Rec guide is out, they're available online. There are plenty of trips, there's skiing, snowboarding, rafting, all kinds of different things that you can do, as well as athletics. I think a lot of the athletic registration deadlines have passed at this point, uh, but you can still get in on raft floats and all kinds of interesting things, um, through our Parks and Rec department, so please check that out. And then I wanted to give a very, very brief update on the Valley to Valley Trail System that Supervisor Fitchakowski and I have been working on behind the scenes. Um, we are trying to coordinate now a regional meeting and we have a meeting, a small meeting tomorrow, just to kind of look at a possible agenda for that meeting and set up some ideas on how we want to approach this regional topic, um, and, and what partners and players we want to have at the table. So we're definitely making progress towards getting a regional meeting scheduled for an initial discussion on the Valley to Valley Trail System. Um, we're looking at probably early November for a large, uh, regional meeting. They'll probably take a couple of hours. So more information on that will be forthcoming, but it is definitely something that's still very much in the works and at the forefront. And that's all I have.
I've got a few things. Thank you very much for the Valley to Valley, uh, update. First, uh, in regards to Fire and Rescue Commission, uh, in regards to the radios, they are having difficulty because of the steel tariffs and the tariffs that have been imposed. But what their plan is to, as they get the parts, to go ahead and bring radio systems online. So if one department is ready, they're gonna go ahead and move forward and make them ready and available as they come along. And so that was their plan, um, as those parts come in and not to wait until they get all the parts and then try to do it all at one time. Um, so that, that's part in regards to the Fire and Rescue Commission. Uh, a lot of the folks were there and we're very thankful that we didn't get the rain that a lot of folks thought we were gonna get. Um, and the next is the Planning Commission. I just want to give an update. I understand in regards to the video, the, I guess I've been on the Planning Commission now for seven years. There's really been three controversial meetings I can think of in seven years. Um, now, if we want to go to that expense, I understand that and I'm a big proponent for transparency and having those meetings on videotape, but there's a cost and our Planning Commission meetings normally are not. Maybe, and, and I don't know, I'm looking at Marty, maybe when we do have hot button issues, we could go ahead and move to record those, such as the Clay Street rezoning, such as the rezoning in regards to the gas tap for Reiner Gas. But we've watched several different things come through and, and having extra staff go and be present and then edit, I don't know that that serves a lot of benefit. So maybe we could come up with a policy that when we have issues where there's been a lot of public interest that, or we even perceive, or any board member perhaps could simply say, I would like this, we're getting ready to put an ice cream store in my district and I would like you to videotape that. Maybe we could have it where any board member could request that and then it could take place. So we would avoid the cost when there's, you know, when we were going through the whole operations of, uh, changing some ordinances, sometimes, I, I'm not a local government lawyer, I am not a planning expert, but sometimes that, that is, there's not a lot of excitement and there's not a single person in the room, so...
Do you, do you think, um, possibly at a future board meeting, we could lump those two item notification requirements and, uh, taping the Planning Commission meetings? Do you think we could lump those together so everybody would have time to think about it and we could have a discussion amongst ourselves?
And, and one of the important things too would be going back to the planning staff to see how it affects them and then Josh, yeah. Yeah. And I think, I think part of the issue also is the fact that the minutes aren't available for a while. So people were, were, you know, messaging me, where are the minutes so that we can, you know, look and there's no video, so that they can't double check, so it's, you know, there's something going on there.
And, and, well, and I will say this, we've got a staff, we do have a lean staff. We have made some additions to the planning department to try to accommodate and bringing in, uh, secretarial staff or office assistant staff that are non, um, I will say, planning, actual planning department positions. Um, so those are some of the things that we could address, but they're going to be up well before we're gonna be making a decision those minutes are gonna be available. And there's not gonna be a decision that's gonna be made until, if there's one speaker that gets up and says something against this, I think we'll go be putting off and the decision won't be made till the second meeting in October. So we've got over a month. Um, the Planning Commission, in, in a few things, yes, I understand that folks don't have necessarily internet access all the time, but citizens who want to be involved can sign up for an email list and get an email and it gets the Planning Commission. You can get all sorts of great things and sign up for it. And so we do that as a service that we go above and beyond. We put it on our website to go above and beyond. We put it in the paper to go above and beyond. We had citizens going door to door and they said they knocked on over 100 doors. I talked to one of the folks who called me and said, I think a gas, a gas pipeline is great, they were knocking on my door trying to get me to come out. And I was like, what are you kidding? I'll come out and speak in favor of it. Um, but... But, so they, they were generating, you had citizens who were getting active, who were going door to door, which is a great thing that they were doing it. But I want to say out of the speakers, and we can check the minutes, I think there were three or four people actually from anywhere in that area. A lot of the speakers were not from the Elliston-Lefayette, but they were not, they were from Blacksburg or they were from, really, it was primarily Blacksburg or Mount Tabor areas of Montgomery County. And so there were a couple of the speakers who did say they didn't know about the meeting. I don't have a problem with us putting up notices in the library, especially on issues. I know that Steve has done that before. But we do go above and beyond to try to give notice. And we made sure that we had a public meeting. Those folks knew about the public meeting. Those were involved with the pipeline. As far as the meeting itself, at times it got disordered. And we had folks, when the planning commission, after they were very patient, listened, Coy Allen went above and beyond as far as giving extra time to speakers, didn't cut them off even after, just kept beeping and beeping and beeping and they kept going on. Eventually, he would say, please wrap it up. But even then, he didn't say, you must stop now, gave all the speakers that opportunity. When the planning commission themselves started trying to debate, and let's say that Todd was saying something that one of the speaker or one of the people in the audience disagreed with, they started shouting over top of the planning commission. And that's not the way it's supposed to work. Those planning commissioners are volunteers. They are not getting paid big bucks. As all of y'all know, they, and so it was sad. I know that people are very passionate about the pipeline and the issues that it poses, but it's not appropriate to start shouting people down because they simply disagree with you. And unfortunately, that's what happened the other night. There was that, especially at the very end when the decision was being made. There were two planning commissioners that voted against it. Mr. Miller didn't state his reasons necessarily, but his questions led me to believe, and I'm gonna try to follow up with a phone call, that he was concerned that maybe that it should have gone out in a newsletter that goes out in the Shawsville area. I'm not familiar with that newsletter.
The link.
The link. And I'm, I'm not familiar with that. But he thought that that might be an extra step that could have been done. But he did not state his reasons that I recall, and I'm looking to Marty. The other was our newest planning commission meeting member. And his point seemed to be, he was on the fence, but he felt like that the gas pipeline was gonna end up, it wasn't going to have enough Montgomery County benefits that seemed to be benefiting Roanoke County and Roanoke City, more so than Montgomery County. And that's the reason that he voted against it. The other four tended to be reasons that they felt like that this was an ideal location, that there are other taps in Montgomery County, and that this seemed to at least give us some benefit. I believe that it's 800 feet from the nearest resident, that nearest resident had been contacted and they're hoping to be the first customer to benefit from this pipeline and them drawing it off MVP. So I will say this, also, the company had been reaching out to people in the community. Eminent domain is not being used on the land. This is where a landowner is actually selling the property for this gas line. It is right up next to Roanoke County. Because it was right up next to Roanoke County, I have reached out to the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors just to let them know that it is that close to the county line. I have not had a lot of input back from them, but I just wanted to make sure that they were aware of that. And I thought as chair, it was the right thing to do to reach out to them. I'm happy to answer any questions about the planning commission, but I don't have a problem with trying to come up with some kind of plan because occasionally we are gonna have that hot button issue, but maybe we can also try to save money when we don't, we don't have that.
How much would it cost? I mean, you just gotta pay somebody to come in here.
Well, it's not...
You'd have to find somebody and train them on the equipment and train them in video editing and all that. I mean, it would be a significant time investment.
Because I know it seems simple, but the reason it seems simple is because they're really good. Somebody who's trying to edit his own little movies and do those types of things online, it's harder than it looks, but when it really looks good, that means somebody has done a really good job. And so, believe it or not, Josh makes us look good when he's editing and picking out which one of us is speaking at the time, making sure that audio is working, but also making sure that then when a speaker comes up, that they're on film and that they're not picking up these cameras. So it does take some time and effort. I'm happy to take a look and see what adding...
Yeah, I think we should, we should definitely have a larger conversation about it.
I agree.
At one of our October meetings in a work session.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think that covers everything that I had. Does that spark anything else?
Um, yeah, the Reiner meeting, what time are we looking at? Is it the...
Six.
Is there a reason we're doing it at dinnertime or is it that? I don't know, Todd, you know your district better. Is 6:00 a good time for your district?
Just about any time it is.
Okay.
He doesn't eat, so...
Yeah, that's right. So, yeah. Okay, 6:00? Yeah, I don't think it was a real good time for, yeah, but that, I mean, for Blacksburg, but that's okay.
See, I always thought that Blacksburg folks, at least when I lived there, we ate late, 7:30, 8:00.
I thought they ate brunch or something.
Top.
We're a turd.
[laughing] Hold that note.